Good evening. We've got, today is January 11th. They're calling closed session to order. A roll call.
Councilmember Orozco.
Here.
Councilmember Knight.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem White.
Here.
Mayor Lada.
Here.
We need to take action on the executive's absence. No, good. Okay. Do we have any approvals or adjustments to the agenda for closed session? Do we have any conflict of interest disclosure? Nope. Okay.
We do have one speaker, Mayor.
Okay. I'll open up for a public comment at 5:03.
Victor Dominguez.
Good evening, Mayor. Council. Real quickly, I wanted to make a public comment before you went out to closed session. It has nothing to do with the items in closed session. It saves me from coming back at 6 o'clock tonight. The comments that I wanted to bring is the organization of the camera system within City Hall. Because I put a public information request to look at some audio and video on a particular evening here at City Hall. However, I can only describe the locations of City Hall in which I want that information from. I can only refer to, there's two cameras in the hallway, two cameras in Room 3. To be specific, because I know when you retrieve data from video system, the more detailed you are on your time specifications and locations, it makes the auditor who gets these information to perform his job more rapidly than it is to look through hours and hours of video and try to find something which he thinks I'm looking at. So my suggestion was, if we can come up with some type of public numbering system, so that way we can say, this is Camera 1, Camera 2, Camera 3, Camera 4. Put numbers on them, so that way when a person does do a public information request like I have done already, I can put the camera locations in which I'm interested in, instead of having the IT guy try to read my mind and figure which one I'm looking at to solve a bunch of headaches and say, no, this is not the one I want. I wanted this one, you know what I mean? So that way, if we number the system, then I can very put on there and says, I want the Camera 1 at, you know, 5:56 through 5:15, you know, whatever it is. Be really specific, so that makes their job a lot easier and it saves a lot of frustration. So that was my request to speak on this. And I would like to follow up with it in future council meetings, or follow up with the city manager, to make sure that this actually gets organized more, not so much for your guys' end, but from a public front end. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any further, any additional speakers?
No.
No additional speakers?
No.
Then we will go ahead and close public comment at 5:05, and adjourn to closed session.
Report out of closed session. The council met in closed session pursuant to Item A, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 5495.7.6. City-designated representative interim city manager, Elizabeth Gibbs, for her designee. During that, on that item, in the closed session, there was a motion by Councilmember Laura, a second by, I'm sorry, Mayor Laura, and second by Councilmember Knight, and a vote of yes by Councilmember White, yes by Knight, yes by Laura, and abstain by Councilmember Orozco, to approve a memorandum of understanding between the City of Beaumont and the Police Officers Association effective January 1, 2016, through December 31, 2018. There was no other reportable action taken on that item. On Item B, personnel matters, evaluation of interim city manager pursuant to Government Code Section 5495.7B, there was no reportable action taken.
Thank you. With that, go ahead and call the, excuse me, regular session to order at 6:38. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Orozco.
Here.
Councilmember Knight.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem White.
Here.
Mayor Lada.
Here.
Regards to public comment period, any one person may address City Council on any matter not on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment form provided at the back table and give it to the city clerk. There is a three-minute limit on public comment. There will be no sharing or passing of time to another person. State law prohibits the council from discussing or taking actions brought up by your comments. Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, can you please all rise for the pleasure of allegiance? Ready, begin.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure. My apologies, I was excited to get started here. Do we have any reportable adjustments to the agenda?
Yes. Mayor, I'd like to pull Item 4B, and we'll put that on a later council meeting.
Any other adjustments? Thank you. Counsel reports. Councilmember Knight? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not reporting.
Public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Do we have any public comment?
We have secrets, yes.
Bear with me.
I'd like to call out Robert Galetta.
We'll go ahead and open public comment at 7:39.
Hello, Honorable Mayor, and City Councilmembers, members of the staff. My name is Robert Galetta, and I'm a proud member of the Beaumont Police Officers Association. And tonight, on behalf of the men and women of the Beaumont Police Officers Association, I wanted to personally thank you for your commitment to the association and to the police department. In a day and age where support for the police officers in this country seems to be waning, it's nice to know that the members of the council, excuse me, and members of the community have our backs, day in and day out. We strive very hard to make this a safe and prosperous community, and again, on behalf of the members of the Police Officers Association, we thank you for your continued support.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker, Judy Bingham.
Mayor Laura. Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. Cleanup Beaumont. The job is not finished. Not one council member has ever mentioned this document, which is the State Controller's Report. It outlines the criminal activity that dominated this city for years. Don't ask the taxpayers to pay for work that was not done. We're not paying for it all over again. I have renters on Bolo Court that found it impossible to get to their homes or get out during the rains. Let's get something straight right off the bat. I don't ever want to hear another staff member blaming me or Nancy Hall for causing a lack of employees that are able to do grading on the road to get to Bolo Court. Just because Beaumont is corrupt doesn't mean that those who are trying to clean it up are responsible for any workers losing their jobs. Just stop it. If you can't provide normal city services, it is not my fault, nor is it Nancy Hall's fault. Why didn't city staff turn in the criminals? We told them what was going on for years. I'm not taking any more blame for this, and you better talk to your staff about it.
Thank you for your comments.
No more speakers, Mayor.
With that, I'll close public comment at 7:43. Now to council report.
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
I'm not reporting tonight.
Councilmember Orozco?
Nothing to report.
Nothing. Mayor Pro Tem White?
Just one reminder that the 7th Annual Pass Area Veterans Expo is on Saturday, January 30th, at the Beaumont Civic Center from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. That's my head report.
Thank you. And I have nothing to report at this time. City Treasurers report.
Thank you, Mayor. I've met with the acting city manager to go over the potential agenda and dates for the standing of financial committee, and discussed it with the city attorney, so I believe that I'm ready to draw up an agenda and to send out and solidify the date now. So we will have our first meeting in January. Also tomorrow, I'm coming in to help staff redact some of the financial records, so that we can get a little bit of that pushed along. And then on Wednesday, I will be in to review the warrants with staff. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I have a quick question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a tentative date on the January meeting?
Yes, the 25th.
Okay.
Okay.
We have one speaker on this item, Mayor.
I'm sorry. On the Treasurers' report?
Yes.
Okay, I'll open public comment at 7:44. 7:44, excuse me.
Judy Bingham?
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. Mayor Laura, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, or if the council's aware of it, but a public records request is long overdue for all the financial statements for November and December, and I wondered why our treasurer can't tell me how much money's in the bank. And the reason is, she has no bank statements either. I would like very much for those to be put up on the website. You are seriously behind on that. I guess that's all. Anyway, I'll be reporting that every time.
Thank you for your comments.
The electeds can briefly respond to comments by the public, briefly.
I just want to clarify what I don't want to leave as a misunderstanding. The bank records are on the city's drive, which I have access to, but they're not ready for a public records request until some redaction is done, which is what I plan on doing under staff's help tomorrow. So that'll be done.
Thank you. That brings us to action items. First item will be Action Item 4A, outstanding invoices. Do we have any public comment on Item 4A?
Mayor, if I could, let me give the staff report, and then we'll go to this.
Okay.
On August 18th, council was given a presentation by staff related to purchase orders for the period of June 1st to December 31st. At that meeting, ULC made an appeal to city councils to have their firms' outstanding invoices reviewed and paid. Since that time, staff has received dozens of other invoices from ULC and has spent a significant amount of time reviewing them for accuracy. Those invoices that proved to be accurate have been submitted to finance for payment to date this fiscal year from July 1st to now. Urban Logic has been paid $372,673.16. Other invoices submitted dated back to 2013 and are attached in the staff report. Also attached for council's review tonight and consideration are two invoices dated July 23rd and October 1st of this year, totaling $38,038.70 for services on qualified facilities of Scenic Route 60 Phase 1. And lastly, there are several more invoices that staff continues to review and may be brought forward to council at a later date if appropriate. The estimated total of those invoices is $223,733. Other numerous invoices outside of that were returned to Urban Logic after extensive staff review and found to have incorrect billing amounts, duplicate sales force numbers, or other various errors. Staff anticipates receiving those back in the coming week. The total amount of those invoices returned to ULC is not available at this time. So with that, the fiscal impact total amount of the invoices in Exhibit A is $15,127.95, and that's for plan check and inspection. And then there is one invoice in there for pavement management and street repairs. And then Exhibit B totals $38,038.70, and that is for the Scenic Route 60 Phase 1. Staff recommendation is to direct staff on how to proceed with these outstanding invoices.
Thank you.
Elizabeth?
Do we have anybody with that? I'll go ahead and open public comment at 6:49.
Judy Bingham?
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. Mayor Laura, if the council needs to direct staff, here's my opinion. There is no recourse for criminal activity. All of these invoices were the old Urban Logic, I believe. So what do we owe them? Are we going to continue to pay these people? I just don't get it. The new Urban Logic contract was voted in on December 13th, in December 2013. I mean, how much longer is this going to go on? I don't want to pay anymore for Urban Logic.
Thank you for your comment.
No more speaker.
No more speakers?
Mayor, because we don't have a timer tonight, I will use my phone.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Before we go forward with this.
Can we close public comment?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to go ahead and close public comment at 6:50.
I guess, okay, thank you. If I get my voice to go. Ms. Urteaga, can you refresh us? We had talked about this. What did we agree to when Mr. McKeon came to us, I don't know how many months ago it was? What was it we agreed to?
Let me find the minutes. I left them on the table in closed session. I'll have to go get them.
Okay. We can move on.
I apologize, I had them in my file, but...
Excuse me. Thank you.
What, are you coming?
Yeah, I just want to point out for the record that city council members, including myself, received a letter from, and I guess it's public record at this time, but a letter addressed to yourself, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor White, Councilman Knight, myself, from Urban Logic Consultants. It was emailed to us, and I have a copy here. I don't know if I should make that available.
What's the date of that letter?
January 6th.
Okay, so it was prior to the agenda being posted? Okay.
So I just want to make sure, because...
Does it need to be read into the record since it was prior to the agenda being posted?
It's up to the council member, but it is a public record, so if anybody wants it, you're not required to read it into the record.
No, I wasn't going to, it's a long letter, so I was just going to give it to staff.
Do you have any comments?
Kind of wanted to hear a question by, in regards to the, what was approved back in May. So maybe we can wait on that.
Okay.
I hear them coming, so...
Mayor Pro Tem White, do you have any comment?
I sure do. A number of questions. There are some invoices in there from 2012, 2011, which is before, I believe, we signed the latest contract with Urban Logic. Are we, when, I guess this is for Mr. Pinkney, when one of, when what happened with Urban Logics, where another company, another entity purchased them, we still owe, if those invoices were owed to the old Urban Logic, are they now owed to the new Urban Logic, or?
It's not, it's not really the old versus new Urban Logic, as I understand. My understanding is that the current owner purchased the stock of the company. But there was a new contract that was signed sometime after the stock of Urban Logic was purchased. And I don't have that contract with me tonight.
Okay.
In terms of whether it addressed that issue of what, but it would be unusual of a new contract, say, that you can forget about money that you owe us for past work that we did.
Okay.
Statute of limitations on a contractual obligation is four years. On a written contractual obligation, four years.
Okay. And maybe you can speak to how we're doing contracts now. Do we have a time limit of when contractors required to request?
We do. 60 days. And if they don't submit their invoices within 60 days, then under the terms of the contract, and I have the verbiage in front of me at the moment, but that is a term of the contract, that they have to submit their invoice within 60 days if they want to be paid for the work.
Okay. And is council being asked, is asking council to approve these invoices, is that standard, or are we dealing with a unique situation because of the history of our last meetings where we addressed this? In other words, normally, does staff come to us and say, here, approve these invoices?
I think that would be probably best answered by your city manager, but my understanding is it's done through the warrant process.
That's what I thought.
This is a unique situation. We were presented with invoices from 2013. I'm not comfortable signing them.
Okay. And do we have, so here's where I'm coming from on this. I was approached by Mr. McKeon regarding, and one of the conversations was regarding the invoices, and I told him right away that I'm not going to get into the weeds of how the staff is addressing the invoices. That's not what I do, and not what I believe council should be doing. So I asked him to put in a written request, and I think that's why that letter was generated, so that it would be, it would be a discussion with all council, not just with me. What I can tell is a problem, and maybe Mr. Mayor Laura can address this because of his work experience, but my problem is it doesn't look like we have a written process, or at least, we're not following some type of process. For example, here's my non-public employee point of view, and that is that a vendor submits an invoice, and submits it with the documentation necessary to justify the invoice. If staff validates it, then a check is written, that invoice is handled. If it's, if there's a problem with staff needing more documentation, or questioning some of the documentation, especially in this case going forward, I think that should be responded to in writing. Because what I heard a lot was, well, he said, and she said, and I did this, and they did that. And I just think that if we had a system in place that we can start, I know the old system was a lot different, but I just think that I would like to see this be a staff issue, and if an invoice comes to you and you think that it needs to be paid, it's paid. We need to pay what we owe, but if there isn't enough documentation or justification for the invoice, then something in writing going back to the vendor, so that the vendor has something solid to address, and then we, and we go back and forth that way. So I just sort of wanted to get Mr. Laura's opinion on that, because I know he works on this a lot more than I do, obviously.
Thank you. Well, what I'll do is I'll start with my concerns, is, well, I guess, what I'd say is, I'm not comfortable approving invoices that are, from one, not within this current fiscal year, current fiscal budget. I have concerns with approving invoices that lack clarity. For example, what the county looks for is the date that the work occurred, what type of work was performed on such date, where was the, where are the worksheets that indicate the location of the inspection, the time spent for that inspection, then the date that the inspection occurred on, and what was the result of that inspection. What I don't see with these invoices is any of that information, and the other concern, I don't have a work product. What are we getting for what we're paying for? On some of the more recent invoices that were approved, I know that we saw, for example, some plan check corrections that helped substantiate the work that was done and what we paid for. So what I would suggest is that maybe staff come up with a outline of work requirement to substantiate the invoice, that outlines what was done, the date that it was done. Looking at the sales force documents, it gives an overview, I think, of the, what took place and when, but it's not descriptive on the type of work that was done, or who actually did the work. Speaking with Mr. Tiaga earlier in regards to this, was I didn't understand that sales force, this document that's attached, identifies both work done by city staff as well as Urban Logic, but it's not clear as to who did what and when. So we definitely need additional, I think, detailed information as to what work was performed for, and for what cost. One of the other documents I looked at identifies, let me just go to that document, just, and I'll do this quickly, page number four. When you look down, 1, 2, 3, the third one down is the sales force number 12662, which on Urban Logic's invoice identifies 3,000 fees received. But when you look at the, oh, let me go back. So that's on page four, when you go down to...
Enter. Thank you.
Page 8, which is the same, sorry, forgive me.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry, page 13. You'll see the sales force information identifies a payment of 3,500. So on one document, we see 3,000, on the other one, we see 3,500. So, and I don't, I'm not going to go through every item to see if the information provided by the contractor is consistent with the payments made, but again, it just goes back to my concern that we don't have the detailed information that I have any comfort level with. I'm not comfortable approving invoices from three or four years ago. That's the concern that I have in regards to these invoices and the request for payment. And I have a question, Elizabeth. Do we have a contract with Urban Logic for a pavement management plan?
Not that I'm aware of.
So we're being invoiced for something we have no contract with Urban Logic for?
I am not aware of a contract with Urban Logic for a pavement.
Okay. And obviously, you don't know why these invoices were not submitted and paid for back when they were, the work was done.
The, my understanding was the work was done in 2012 or 2013, based on Mr. McKeon's backup. So I, I know there's copies of emails back and forth attached to that particular invoice. I'm included in those emails. However, that, those email exchanges had to do with a citizen that was complaining about his street in Sundance, and wanted to know what the city was going to do about it. It was not... It was not a specific discussion about the actual pavement management plan. Dee did say in his email that he was working on a pavement management plan, and that he would take that to counsel at some point, but the documentation that's attached to the invoice that's for you tonight, the majority of that documentation had to do with responding to Mr. Polstro, who lives in Sundance.
Thank you. Do you have a question more?
Yeah. These Salesforce numbers, I've been noticing them, are these, are Salesforce numbers in our database?
Yes.
So for any contractor to reflect our information, they would get it from our database?
Yes.
So any wrong Salesforce numbers will be on our part?
No.
No?
The invoice, I think what Mayor Lara was referring to was the cover page, the actual invoice from Urban Logic, there's errors on that, but the Salesforce information...
So it should match, it should match up with what's the job currently, like, for example, sales, the Salesforce numbers, the Salesforce number is related to the job number, or related to what the work is, correct?
Correct. For example, on this 662, remember, 12 is the year, so 12-662, those are for landscaping and irrigation plans, for Tournament Hills 2, Track 31288.
Now, yeah, I'm just, so are Salesforce numbers connected to, in our system, connected to the fees that are collected from the developer?
Yes. It says on this same page, total fees collected were $3,500.
Okay. So what I'm just concerned is, if, you know, in the past, we've had some numbers mixed up, and they don't match, and I just want to make sure it's not on our end that we are making any mistakes. How long ago have these invoices been submitted, and how many times have they gone back and forth?
We have upwards of 100. I, for these particular invoices, I don't know.
Because I kind of like...
We try to date stamp them as they come in, but a lot of times, sometimes, not a lot of times, sometimes they are returned, and then we don't get the actual date stamped one back, we would get another.
So, because I kind of agree with Councilman White in regards to, if there's communication back with a contractor, and, you know, basically, we receive something that's not to our standards, when we provide it back to them, is it just verbal communication, or are we giving them something written, writing, from our planning department, or from staff indicating this needs to be corrected specifically, so and so number is not correct with, you know, the invoice number? I mean, are we giving any direction to our, not just this particular contractor, but any contractors?
Yes. We actually gave Mr. McKeon a copy of the cover sheet with our Public Works analyst notes on it, so that he knew exactly where the errors were and where they needed to be corrected. We actually meet with Urban Logic, the finance director, myself, and the Public Works analyst spent two hours with him last week going through invoices. We spent three hours with him sometime in December, I'd have to look at my calendar, going through invoices, pointing out errors and discrepancies, and then we give those back to him. We each document, each side documents what invoices are moving forward to be paid, which invoices are going back, so we all have a list of...
Okay. So the question was asked, if the work was being done, who's, who's reviewing these? Are these being reviewed by a finance director, by Kyle, or, I mean, which department's reviewing these besides yourself, making sure the work is done? I mean, I mean, are we, is there very, is there very, are we verifying that the work is being done, or are we just going by the developer saying, yes, they came and checked, did the plan check, or are we, how are we going about it?
For plan check and inspection, everything is logged into Salesforce, so that's why we print out the backup. Staff prints out the backup and attaches it to the invoice, and then I compare that. I'm signing right now, prior to November 1st, it was the Development Services Director, but November 1st, we're in a new organizational structure. And so staff will attach the Salesforce data for me, showing the, the backup to it. Now, I cannot verify the number of hours that a plan checker spends on a particular set of plans, and that is a flaw right now, that we're working on as we move forward with the new bid and the new contractor. We will sit down at the start of that contract and talk about, okay, did the plan checker spend five hours plan checking, or 10 hours plan checking? Because right now, what you have in front of you, I have no way to verify that the plan checker actually spent that amount of hours on. And I think there, we're kind of backing into the system. We're taking what was collected by the city and doing a running total, which is, if you look on, let me show you what I'm talking about. So page five, if you look at Tournament Hills 2 Pardee, the spreadsheet that's in your packet.
While you're getting at, one thing I think Mr. Rosko was asking is, who verifies that the plan check was done? Is that, is that done by the developer?
No, the city engineer.
City?
Yeah. He, he monitors the actual plan checks and makes sure that we don't end up with six, seven, eight plan checks.
So who was in it prior, I mean, before, I mean, I know, we've had, I know in the past, a really bad accounting system in terms of what comes in, what comes out, and we're backed up in a lot of other documents that we have, we don't have uploaded. You know, my concern is, I guess, I want to get straight to the point, because I know my colleagues are probably asking me, okay, get to the point here, is, you know, I know we've had a lot of issues in terms of collecting the debt, and I mean, and you just kind of said yourself that, at one point, we don't know what's verifiable, we need more documentation on our end to verify. This kind of question goes to our city, city attorney, what's our ability not to pay, what will happen? I mean, where are we? What I don't want to see ourselves into, I mean, I mean, if it's on our, our end, in terms of, we're not managing correctly in the past, that's due to our fault, right? I mean, in terms of how, what would happen if we don't pay?
We're dealing with, in many instances, public funds, and so we have an obligation as a, as a city stewards of those funds to verify, to confirm that, that an invoice is appropriate, and that there is, that it's clear what the, what the charges are for, and that there's backup to show that the work was, was done. I'm not opining one way or the other on the validity of the invoices submitted in this case, but I'm just saying, in general, we have an obligation to make sure that when we pay something, that it's a legitimate obligation that we're paying. Does that answer your question?
No, it doesn't. I'm asking it in a different way.
What's our duty to have a process in place?
Yeah. Well, we know we don't, I mean, the process in the past, we've had, had them correctly, but what would happen? I'm asking you, what would happen if we weren't going to pay certain, certain invoices, and we basically replied, "Sorry, we're not going to pay your invoices," as my colleague suggested?
Well, I think, I think it's a question of reasonableness of our, our position, and if, you know, somebody submits a bill to the city for hypothetically, say, $50,000, and they say, you know, invoice for $50,000, service is rendered, then, you know, the city is, it's reasonable for the city to say, "We're not going to pay that bill, because we don't know what work was done for it. There's no description, or when it was done, who did it." I think that's a reasonable position on the city's part. Just because somebody submits a bill to the city, doesn't mean we have an obligation to pay it. We only have an obligation to pay for things that we confirm, where we confirm the services were provided, consistent with the terms of the contract, that we know what was done, and that we're provided reasonable information. No different than if, if you hired somebody yourself as a council member, and, you know, you had somebody work on your car, you didn't know what was wrong, and they gave you a bill for $10,000, and didn't tell you what they did, or when they did it, what parts they replaced, it's, it's, it's an issue of reasonableness. And so, as long as our, now, are we required to have a, a formal policy and procedure in place? Typically, the procedure would be, the vendor submits a bill, we review it, if we have concerns or questions, we go back to the vendor and express what those concerns or questions are, and until we work through those and feel comfortable enough to pay it. I mean, that would be typically the process that you would see.
May it be reasonable for me to, if the contractor's here, may I ask questions to the contractor?
I have an answer to Councilmember Knight's question. So at the September 15th meeting, direction was given to staff to place the invoices under Exhibit B on the warrant list under the consent calendar of a future meeting. Exhibit C will be reviewed by Albert Webb Associates and potentially paid by the trustee, and that was a, that was a 5-0 vote. You also approved invoices under Exhibit A, and you continued Exhibit B and Exhibit C. Exhibit C was supposed to be reviewed by Albert Webb. Of the invoices that were presented that night, only three of them are being returned to you tonight. The rest of them, I'd have to check to see where they're at.
Thank you.
Let me, let me make one other comment that just occurred to me. Since some of these invoices go back more than four years, there may be no legal obligation to pay them, period. And it may even be a gift to public funds to pay a debt that is, there's no legal obligation to pay. So.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Councilmember Rosko had a question.
Yeah, no, if it was for us to have the contractor come up and...
And that's what I'd like to comment on.
Okay.
I think part of the question that I didn't hear answered by Mr. Rosko, and again, I think it's a little confusing, was, I think where he was going, or at least where I would like to go, is that if we go through a process, a invoice is submitted, we turn it down, for whatever reason, maybe we give them instructions on how to fix it, comes back to us, and ultimately, we turn it down. Then they do have a recourse, which is a legal recourse, to say that, you know, Beaumont, you know, is unjustifying, unjustifyingly turning down my invoice, correct?
They, they would, of course. Hopefully, it wouldn't come to that. One approach would be to do what you're doing tonight, to, to meet with the developer, or the contractor, and try to work through it in this manner, this unusual situation, and hear from the, the vendor, and try to sort through it. But if you can't, then ultimately, you know, the courts are always available to resolve differences, obviously not the way that either side wants to resolve their differences.
See, now, here's my, this is my comment, my problem with bringing up Mr. McKeon to, to give us his side of the story, is I'm still, it's not my response, yeah, it's not within my realm to be approving invoices and determining whether or not the invoice is justified to be paid. So whatever questions I may have to ask, I don't know where it's going to get me, because I, I think it's a staff issue to, to either, I mean, I'm not an engineer, I don't think any of us are, to, to validate whether or not the invoices need to be paid. Mr. McKeon had the opportunity to speak in public comments, and I guess he's probably put in a, a comment now, but I just don't, I don't see the benefit of asking questions where it's not going, it's not going to change my position, because I don't think it's my, my job to approve these invoices.
And if I could just speak to that, I absolutely understand that. My conversation with Mr. McKeon led to me putting it on the agenda, and I'll tell you why. Number one, I'm not comfortable signing invoices from 2013. Number two, he indicated to me that on several occasions, and he stated this to me with witnesses, on several occasions, he submitted these same invoices, and they were returned by the then-city manager and finance director, as not approved. And that tells me that there was a problem then, and now I'm even more uncomfortable. And with the situation that we have, and having brought prior invoices to counsel in September, I was uncomfortable denying them, even though that's my inclination, is to deny them. Mr. McKeon has other routes. In all fairness to his company, I thought that it would best be served that we have this conversation with counsel and in the public, and that's what I agreed to when we met. I agreed to bring these before counsel, but I did tell him initially, I, I'm not going to approve anything from 2013, I cannot do that.
Do we have a consensus on having a contractor come up to speak?
I think he put a slip in, so I don't know if it's...
Yeah, if he put a slip in, he's entitled to speak.
After public comments been closed?
It's been closed already.
Oh, okay, well, then, it's closed.
It's up to mayor.
It's up to the mayor.
And there's two minutes left on council discussion.
Speak real quick.
I'm sorry?
May I speak real quick?
Yes, Kim.
I'm not comfortable with, if Elizabeth is not comfortable with signing off on these, I am not comfortable approving anything that she's not willing to sign off on, and I don't know how we solve this problem, but the last time Mr. McKeon was here, talking about this, I was under the understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, that you just had a few more invoices, but now we're getting like, we got a whole box full. And so I, I'm a bit confused about what we agreed to and what we're getting now. So maybe, you know...
There were, for a, there were 12 invoices under Exhibit B.
Okay.
And I would have to confirm which ones have already been paid, and then, there's, there's three out of the 12 that are back on the agenda for tonight.
Okay.
And I'll be happy to pay those, since that's what counsel agreed to back in September. The motion was to place the invoices on the warrant list under consent calendar for a future meeting. I'll be happy to pull those three items, those three invoices out, but the other nine invoices in Exhibit A tonight were not in Exhibit B in September.
Okay. That, that's where my confusion was. Thank you.
Yeah, I've just got one more question for council. On a, you said that there's a 60-day...
On the new contracts that we've prepared, that's the requirement, is that a vendor submit their invoices within 60 days of the time the work is done, so that we don't end up with situations where we have invoices coming in from two years prior, and then you're having to figure out how you're going to pay that in the current fiscal year.
Okay.
I still, I still have a stack of 2014 invoices that the Public Works analyst is going through, and a few 2013 invoices that he's going through, and then the rest are all 2015, and, and it is a box full. I also returned a box full to Mr. McKeon last week on Thursday when we met, for errors, and most of those were plan check and inspection, but it was like the error that you pointed out, Mayor Lara, discrepancies in plan check numbers. I have one invoice, for example, from September, where we're billed on two different invoices for the same work with two different dollar amounts, so I'm going to have to return those as well.
Mayor, I'd like to correct my position on speaking. I'm not opposed to Mr. McKeon with your approval, speaking for three minutes, I'm just opposed, I, I don't see the, the benefit of us asking questions and having that kind of, kind of back and forth at this point. I think that back and forth needs to be between staff and Mr. McKeon, not between council and Mr. McKeon.
I agree.
That's my position.
Mayor, may I, may I add one point? I do remember the meeting where it was brought up about the age of the invoices, and I do remember Mr. McKeon implying that there were some more invoices that were very old, that he was thinking about bringing back, and the discussion that we had, where I used a different example for a different vendor that was giving us belated invoices, but I remember the turn of events where the city attorney did agree to make sure that there was a window in the contract for getting all the invoices in. But in this particular example, I did note, and you brought up invoice 622 from Salesforce, and that actually originated in June of 2012. So the work actually, when we're trying to approve this and piece it together, goes back initially to June of 2012. It wasn't completed or approved on Salesforce until November of 2013, and we're sitting here trying to piece it together today. here trying to piece it together today. And I don't think any of us would reasonably ever think that we could work for a vendor and just turn invoices in that were three to four years old and expect anybody to be able to make sense of it anymore. So I can understand the dilemma. And I just wanted to point out that the actual beginning of the work even goes back farther.
Thank you. I agree. I think what we'll do is we'll go ahead. I don't have a problem allowing Mr. McKeonan the three minutes to speak. I don't want to take that opportunity to engage in any type of back and forth. We'll just have him do his public comment. So with that, we, do we have a consensus on council then?
Yeah, good.
Okay, so with that, I'll go ahead and open up, reopen the public comment. That's 7:24.
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, City Council members. I just want to get up and state a few facts. There, I believe there is some misrepresentation of the facts that have been stated here tonight. None of my invoices are four years old. And if work on a project was started in 2012, some, if that was a plan, I don't have that invoice in front of me. If that was a plan check invoice, we don't control when the second plan check comes back, or the third plan check comes back. There's been many projects that were started back in, I don't know, 2008, that didn't come back to the city until many years later. There's one, in fact, that's been sitting dormant for years, and I believe it's going to be before the city fairly soon. In fact, it came back to us recently to have its bond exoneration looked at. So that was almost five years later. We don't control when the applicant puts in his second or third plan check. There was also another misrepresentation, in my estimation, a misrepresentation of facts of invoices that were returned. And I did say, there were a specific set of invoices that were on Exhibit C. And Exhibit C has its own unique issues. What was on Exhibit B were, I believe, brought before you tonight. There were some issues. Just as the city manager had said, they did point out several clerical errors on the Salesforce numbers. But as I've gone through them with my person in the office over the last couple of days, we've actually noticed that there's problems with the Salesforce, and how those Salesforce numbers and the fees were entered in Salesforce. And that is possibly a problem. So you're right, we shouldn't be discussing all that. That should be discussed between staff and ourselves to straighten out all of those issues. Before you tonight are also two other invoices that had nothing to do with the discussion of Exhibit A, B, or C. You paid a, all the, all the invoices on Exhibit A you paid before. The ones on Exhibit B were supposed to come back to you, not come back to you, they were, if the documentation was presented to the staff, they were supposed to just pay it normally on the warrants list. Exhibit C was another issue that needed to be discussed with the city attorney. Before you tonight are two other invoices that for six months or more now, I've been told that was going to be brought, had to be brought before council, had to be brought before council, the one for the SR60. Tonight is the first night it's ever been brought before council. That had nothing to do with us. It was completely staff's decision not to bring it before council. We don't know why. We have no control over that. So we, I respectfully would ask why those issues aren't, those invoices wouldn't be addressed tonight. Thank you. Time's up.
Thank you for your comment. With that...
I can respond to that last question. We don't have a current purchase order for those last two invoices, therefore the State Route 60 project. And although Mr. McKeonan has a contract, we do not have a purchase order for those. So that's why I brought them.
The purchase order was under the new process, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
To help straighten some of this stuff out.
Right.
Okay.
And I can issue a purchase order if you approve those two invoices tonight.
The SR60? Those are, what pages are those?
They're Exhibit B.
What's this page number?
Are we going to continue conversation? I'm okay either way.
We need a motion.
Okay. Need a motion to continue conversation?
After the 30 minutes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to continue at least 10 minutes. Another 10 minutes?
Okay, I'll second that.
Another 10 minutes for continued conversation on this item?
And I have a quick question that's sort of related, but not so much. We use Salesforce where I work. And in our Salesforce environment, we have, we give access to our vendors and contractors, so that they can go in, you know, they have limited access. They can't make changes or see other vendors and contractors. And I think that might be something you might want to look into.
Mr. McKeonan has access.
Oh, he does have access.
I understood from a phone call from him today that he doesn't have access anymore, and I don't know why that happened.
Okay.
It was not intentional.
Okay.
But he has access.
Because you can use the notes section in there to reply to Mr. McKeonan that says, "We didn't approve this invoice because X, Y, Z." And then we have a record of it. And that's the way we use it where I work. So I just thought of bringing that up. That's the only...
It's easier to write on the invoice and hand it back to them.
Yeah, I know. It's just, then you get the wrong invoice back. You know, you get a different...
Yeah. And that's my concern. We kind of lose track of, you know, what went out, what went in. We have no record in detail. That's what I was going to get to. So what page was that?
Can I back up real quick? The motion to continue was by whom?
Was by...
Councilmember Roscoe.
And...
Seconded by White. Matt Bamper, Tim White. So do we find out what page that was? Exhibit B?
It's after the pavement management invoice. I don't have page numbers.
I'd like to make a motion on this item.
Mayor, we still have public comment period open, and we did get one more request on this item. So...
Okay.
I thought we closed it twice.
It wasn't closed.
We closed it the first time. We didn't close it the second time.
You wish to entertain?
Sure.
Who was it?
Judy Bingham.
Did she really speak on that?
Wait. Can I have a... It is, I understand Ms. Bingham spoke initially on this item. How's it handled when...
Well, her topic refers to the SR60. That was...
You know, Mayor, it's entirely up to you. The rules of the council are that an individual can get up and speak for up to three minutes. If you, and that's one time. If you allow one person to exceed that, then you should allow others as well on that item.
Okay.
It's your decision.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and allow it. Ms. Bingham?
Thank you, Mayor Lara. This is about the SR60. I read the meeting minutes on the Petrero. I want to know who is directing Chris, our engineer, about this? Kyle and Chris are, are going to these meetings with Caltrans. One of the things I wanted to sit, bring up is the city circumstances have changed, and, and the city has put the project on hold, and they will need to resubmit any other plans. So why are we doing any Petrero or SR60 things now? That's my question.
Thank you very much for your comment. Do we have any additional speakers?
No, Mayor.
I'll go ahead and close public comment at 7:31. I found the items. Seventy-three. I got it. Okay. Seventy-four, seventy, yeah. So can, are we able to verify that the SR60 Phase 1, because Kyle did attend, our staff did attend these meetings with the consultant?
Yes.
Okay, so we can verify that, we can verify that the attendance was there and work was done?
Through, through the minutes of those meetings, which Mr. McKeonan has attached, although not all the meetings are attached to the invoice, just a couple.
It was only one meeting for the first invoice.
Excuse me, Mayor. Out of order.
We have, I want to say October, November, at some point, we did postpone meeting with Caltrans. There is another, there are monthly meetings that are set, a recurring meeting that is, happens with Caltrans. And at some point, we did notify Caltrans that based on council's request to have a workshop, that we would not like to have any meetings until that workshop happens. That was supposed to happen in January. Chris is ready for that workshop. We just need to set a date, and we're looking at February now because of the other issues that have come before us that need to be heard in January. There is another standing meeting scheduled for Thursday with Caltrans, and I will ask staff to postpone that meeting again. I think it's, I think it was October, November, and December that we postponed.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. No, I wasn't done yet.
Okay.
So, so I was looking at the minutes. I'm going through the Petrero Boulevard Exchange agenda, and I see the minutes on page 77, and then another agenda. So there's one, and then April 9th, January 15th, 2015. And then, and I think that was it, right? So if council is acceptable, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, these, these particular one on Exhibit B, the SR60s.
The two, for clarification, the two invoices?
The ones for the SR60, yes. I don't see a second.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Do we have any other motion?
I move that we, that per city manager's conversation, that the items from Item B are put on the warrants list, as we had promised Mr., or as we had agreed to do before, and that all other invoices be handled directly between staff and Mr. McKeonan, and responses be given back in writing, writing, responses in writing.
To council or to?
Between the staff and Mr., and Mr. McKeonan. So if, if, just for clarification, if you need more information, you tell him that in writing. If he provides you the information, he provides it to you in writing, so that we have a, a history.
So point of clarification. So there, these, so is anything on Exhibit B, which is the SR60s, will be going to what the warrants?
The three items that you brought up.
The previous Exhibit B.
Correct. If the SR60s are one of those three, then yes. If they're not, then I think that should be addressed between staff and Mr. McKeonan. That's my...
I will second that motion.
We have a motion by White, and that's by Knight. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Protem White?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to item 4C, city attorney invoices.
And I'm going to recuse myself, since these are invoices submitted by my law firm.
Mayor and council, you have the January, I'm sorry, the December invoices from SBDM before you to the amount of $70,295.16. I did want to point out to council, although it is not included because of the term of my privilege, sorry, the retainer. If you turn to the invoice in the retainer while I was reviewing these invoices before they were put on the agenda, I did want to point out something to you. I believe it's the The retainer amount, $8,521.32. Although it doesn't show on here, again, it was about 140 hours, which they're billing us about $50 an hour on the retainer. And I just wanted to let you know publicly that their rate obvious, actually is much higher, but we're getting a discount. And then the second thing I'd like to do is reaffirm to, from council, that you would like to continue to have these on the agenda.
As opposed to, Mayor, yeah? Yes. Opposed to...
As opposed to staff approving them?
They would go to the warrants?
Through the warrants.
I know, for me, I don't mind having these right here as now, just to kind of, you know, to be able to see them. Okay. Do we have any other?
I agree. I'd like to keep doing what you're doing.
Either way, either way, makes it easier.
Okay. Just go ahead and continue doing that at this point in time.
Okay. So I need a motion.
I move that we approve the invoices.
Wait a minute.
Sorry.
Sorry. All right. Let me open public comment on this item at 7:38.
Judy Bingham?
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. Mayor Lara, I just want to point out that the total paid to this law firm since April 28th, 2015, is $608,000. And I just, and there are many other attorney fees also. I have never gotten a list of the lawsuits, and I've asked for that numerous times. I'm also very upset by the obstruction because of the redacting of all the public records. This is getting very irritating. So I just want you to know, I'm not happy about it.
Thank you very much for your comment. Do we have any other speakers?
No.
With that, I'll go ahead and close public comment at 7:40.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
All of the litigation cases were read into the record at the last meeting, and they can be viewed on YouTube.
Okay. Thank you.
And in response to that, Mr. Pinkney had told us that in the next meeting where he would do that, he would provide us, and make it a regular thing once a month, a list of all the...
Yes. And we've, John and I have agreed on the second meeting of the month.
And I thought at the last meeting, we were told that, that that list had been made available, at least on the internet? No?
I don't think it's on the internet.
Okay. But I mean, the list wasn't made available to Ms. Bingham at the last meeting?
I can clarify. The list is being prepared by Ms. White, the law firm, to respond to Mrs. Bingham's attorney.
Okay.
And it's the whole letter, so it's a part of that letter that is being formulated.
Okay, great.
Selena told me today that it's almost, just about ready.
Okay. I want to make a motion, but before I do, I just want to say I, I have a vote of confidence in Mr. Pinkney and his firm. I think the kind of work that we're getting is very valuable. And so I make a motion that we approve these invoices.
I'll second that motion.
Here we have a motion by Mayor Protem White, Councilmember Roscoe, second. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Protem White?
Yes.
Mayor Lara?
Aye.
Do we want to get Mr. Pinkney back in the...
Chat, chat, okay.
Next up is city manager report, item number five.
I don't have anything to report.
We have nothing to report. Do we have any public comment?
Not on five.
Not on five. Any comment from council on five? That brings us to item number six, city clerk report.
I already gave you the update on the letter for Mr. Horowitz, for Mrs. Bingham's attorney. So that's on progress, and it's told me that that's just about ready to go out. And we do, and we do have public comment on this.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and open public comment at 7:42.
Judy Bingham?
Judy Bingham, 115 Minnesota. Mayor Lara, this is a list of the public records. When I met with Mr. Martinez a month ago, I was promised these. Still don't have them. But as Mr. Pinkney said, the courts are always available to me, a citizen, to get public records. So I sure... So I sure hope you do this soon.
Thank you very much for your comment. Do we have any other speakers on this item?
No other speakers, Mayor.
With that, I'll go ahead and close the public comment at 7:44. And we'll move on to city attorney's report.
Nothing this evening.
Do we have any public comment on city attorney's report?
No, Mayor, no.
Okay. That brings us to the consent calendar, item number eight. Is there anybody wishing to have any items pulled off this? No seen such. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Knight, seconded by Mayor Protem Lada, oh, excuse me, Protem White. I did it. Try not to, but I did it. Roll call. Councilmember Roscoe?
Aye.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Protem White?
Yes.
Mayor Lada?
Aye.
That brings us to adjournment.
Yeah.
Do we have any other comments from council? Seen no comments, I'll adjourn the meeting at 7:44.